Good morning, everyone. I will call the meeting to order for the Commissioners' Meeting of July 1st, first day of July. Today, we have distinguished veteran Dan Burns, our Clerk of Court, that's going to lead us in the pledge, and we are joined by John Kleindance to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would join me in an attitude of prayer? Lord, as we gather today in this assembly of governance, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom in leading us to participate, deliberate, and make decisions for the common good of York County. We recognize the many challenges and trials that you put to us and those challenges that we create among ourselves, and we thank you for the elected and the appointed officials that you provide to help us meet those challenges. Please watch over them and give them courage and conviction. We ask for your guidance and leadership, that all of us may do more for more, for it is better to give than receive. We humbly ask these things in your name. Amen.
So first up, we are joined by Michelle Havas, who's the Executive Director of Human Services, and she's going to be giving us an update on the 2020-21 Human Services Block Grant Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here today. I am hoping to give you just a quick overview, a quicker overview of our Human Services Block Grant Plan. Our planning process requires two public meetings, and we did have a longer Zoom meeting on June 16th where we rolled out a little bit more of the detail that's involved in our Human Services Block Grant planning. But our Human Services Block Grant Plan pulls the money and the planning processes for three different departments, and those would be the York Adams MHIDD program, the York Adams Drug and Alcohol Commission, and New York County Human Services. And so the total dollars that are incorporated in this plan And so this encompasses almost all of the MHIDD budget, some of the drug and alcohol budget, and some of the human services budget. And so our plan really has quite an extensive narrative that at the end of my presentation, I'll give everybody the website if there's anybody from the public that would like to look at the plan. The narrative really talks a lot about our planning efforts, how we work better together as a collective entity, how we pool in some of the human services services from the other departments that are not incorporated in this plan, and how we really prioritize those state initiatives that we are required to focus on. Some of those things being keeping people in the community and out of institutional care, working with certain priority populations such as those that have co-occurring disorders, mental health, drug and alcohol, mental health, intellectual disabilities, mental health, and the forensic population. And so the plan really goes into a little bit more detail how we do all of that and how we prioritize the dollars in those areas. We also spend a lot of time talking about how we address some of the social determinants of health, which is a big word that we talk a lot about now, which really are those focus areas that are outside of some of the clinical services such as housing, employment, things that actually people need probably more importantly than some of the other services that we provide in order to have a stable life. And so we talk in our plan a lot about how we incorporate a lot of those aspects into all of our systems and help support people more holistically. The plan, the $17 million plan, interestingly, most of that money, $13 million of that money, gets allocated for mental health. $3 million of that gets allocated to the Intellectual Disabilities Program, and the other $2 million gets allocated to drug and alcohol and homeless services. And our block grant, which we participated in, chose to participate in several years ago, allows us to pull our money together so that we can shift it amongst any of those categories. However, because we've never really had many increases in dollars, we've really not done a lot of shifting from mental health to intellectual disabilities, because we've just not had the luxury of really being able to take away from a program to give to somebody else. I will say that of that almost $18 million, half of that money goes to residential care, most of that being in mental health group homes, but also in some homeless shelter services. So one of the things that I want to talk about also is that our plan really speaks to flat funding. We've been asked to speak and plan as if we are going to get the same amount of money, the $17.8 million, but we also know that in the current budget, we've been flat-funded for five months, and we have no guarantee that we will be able to continue that level funding come December. And so one of the things that we have been doing this year, which really doesn't come through in our plan because we were not asked to speak about it, was that realistically, while we are having a plan that speaks to $18 million, we are operating as if we may very well get cuts, because we believe very much that it is highly possible we will. And so one of our concerns is if we have to make reductions in services in December and have had no preparation for that, it's going to be very hard to go back to service providers and now make up whatever the loss may be. So at this point, some of what we are doing from a practical standpoint is we are adhering to more of a back-to-bystakes kind of approach to a lot of our services. Over the years, we've had some luxury of being able to implement some services that may have been outside of what we normally would do, and we're having to relook at all of those types of programs to see if, in fact, we'll be able to sustain them moving forward. We're also staggering some of the restart for some of our programs. Some of our mental health, intellectual disabilities, our day programs, they've not been operating because of the virus, and right now, we are looking at what programs we can delay and reopening in order to save some of the funding in our current fiscal year, which actually starts today. We're also looking at all of our internal budgets to assess where we think we might be able to have some cost savings. We're looking at staffing patterns and where we need to go if we need to really trim down significantly. We're also trying to make sure that anybody that is eligible for medical assistance is enrolled in medical assistance. Those individuals not only have some, they're income generators for case management in mental health and intellectual disabilities. In other words, when case management is provided for someone on MA, we get revenue from that, but they also then do not become services that we end up having to pay for out of our county block grant. So we're really trying to make sure that we utilize available medical assistance dollars as effectively as possible. And lastly, I think our priority in terms of ongoing funding, should there be any significant cuts, goes back to what I talked about in the first part of housing services. A lot of what we provide through MHIDD, as I mentioned, is group home and structured support for individuals who have a very difficult time living in the community without supervision. And so we are feeling like that right now is one of our focus areas, and that is a level of care that we really want to support moving forward. And so just in wrapping this up, our block grant plan is actually due July 15th. We are willing, are able to take comments or have discussion with anybody in the community or yourselves. If, after reading the plan, you have questions until July 13th. Our plan is available on our website at yorkcountyhumanservices.org if anybody would like to take a look at our plan and provide comments. Lastly, I would just say that, as is typical always, there is a county match involved. I know that's a motion later in the agenda, but the county is required to pay a match toward services. The match for our Human Services Block Grant this year is $592,112. And so that will come up a little bit later. Just to clarify, the MHIDD program and the drug and alcohol program is a joinder program, and so this represents just York County's portion. Adams County will have to provide their share of the match for the Adams County portion of the block grant funding. So that's where we are at this point. We would be thrilled at this point if we end up with flat funding, but as I say, we have some reservations about that, but time will tell.
For folks that download the report and read it and have a comment, is there an email to which they can correspond with their comments or a phone number?
There should be an email on our website, but our phone number, yes, people can give us a call also, is 717-771-9347. So yes, absolutely.
One thing, you referred to the joinder, and just for the public's information, the block grant allocation process was voluntary for different counties. And York County went ahead several years ago and entered into the block agreement, and there was a lot of discussion between the Commissioners and deciding whether this was appropriate or not. But in the joinder process, I understand that Adams County did not join the block grant program.
Correct.
So the allocations for the funding that are supported through the joinder, through both boards, those allocations are kept separately, and we have the discretion of reallocating funds, and they do not.
Correct. So one of the things that happens in the block grant process is there's a couple benefits to being in the block grant. You get to pool your money, all those funding streams, put them together, and then figure out where your biggest needs are. You can use them as a total pot versus their individual funding streams. The other thing that it provides in this year, probably not so much, but it does provide the opportunity to carry over dollars should you have dollars left at the end of a fiscal year. The normal process does not allow for that. So those were two benefits to joining the block grant. Adams County chose not to do that, so what that really did is it separated the allocation for the MHIDD program and the York Adams Drug and Alcohol Commission. It separated, whereas Adams gets their allocation, we get ours. Ours goes into our block grant, Adams County comes over here. When it comes back into the MHIDD program, then they run the program as a joinder, so anybody in York and Adams County can receive those services.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle?
I guess one just for Mark, as far as the county match, that is in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle? All right, on to item number five.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve letters of agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and the following agencies listed below to provide court reporting networks driving under the influence education classes and intervention treatment to driving under the influence clients for the period of July 1st, 2020, through June 30, 2021, and as listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
Make a motion to approve a contract agreement amendment between the County of York on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging Department and VRI Franklin, Ohio, for fiscal year 2019-2020 due to the provider exceeding their original contract amount of $1,500, increasing it to $3,950.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Youth Development Center and Bradford County Children Youth Services to house Bradford County youth for $375.60 per day for the period of July 1st, 2020, through June 30, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
Make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and MacRae Consulting, York, Pennsylvania, to provide mentoring for county management supervisors at a rate of $175 per hour, up to a maximum of $7,500 for the period of July 1st, 2020, through June 30, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mark, I don't believe Christie is here. That money is already allocated in the budget in the HR training.
Yes, it is.
Is that correct? So we have the money available for that service?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Catapult Limited, Newark, Delaware, for internet web hosting for the Catapult Maintenance Tracking System for the annual fee of $1,825 and a one-time transition fee of $875.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and the Pennsylvania Department of State, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to provide an Albert Network security sensor at no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I called Joe this morning, and he doesn't have to come up and ask him what an Albert Network security sensor was, and he said it's another layer of security provided by the state, so we welcome that security device put in.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve a bridge management agreement between the County of York and the County of Adams, identifying the jointly owned bridges that traverse both York and Adams Counties, designated which bridges are assigned to each county under the PennDOT Bridges Maintenance System, outlining the management responsibilities for both counties and providing that the counties agree to share equally in the management responsibility cost.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Might I ask Michelle to comment, just for those watching that aren't familiar? We have several bridges in the county that are in York County and are in adjoining counties, and this is an arrangement to take care of those bridges.
Yes, that's correct. There are several bridges that span both York and Adams County, and they're part of the PennDOT Bridge Maintenance System. There was a recommendation by our bridge engineer to take two of those bridges that we would otherwise equally share the maintenance, assign one. They're very similar bridges, similar in cost. One would be assigned to Adams County, one would be assigned to York County. So on that recommendation, Adams County and York County reached an agreement regarding what that maintenance would look like for each of those bridges. They are, so Adams County has different bridge numbers for them, but for York County, it's Bridge 156 and 158.
And would that agreement provide that if there is a rehabilitation or renovation project for the bridge, that we would both share in the cost?
Well, for those two bridges in particular, we're agreeing to take on responsibility for one of those bridges. They're agreeing to take on responsibility for the other bridge, whether it's a bridge project, construction, maintenance. Again, you know, because it's still part of the overall bridge system, they would be notified of that. It's still within that entire bridge maintenance agreement.
Okay.
Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13.
I make a motion to approve the submission of the Human Services Block Grant Plan on behalf of the York County Human Services Department for fiscal year 2020-2021, which includes funding for the services related to mental health, intellectual and developmental disabilities, substance use disorders, homeless, near homeless, and low income, and includes a required York County match in the amount of $592,112.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
Make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and CDWG Chicago, Illinois, for the licensing of various Microsoft software products for a total cost of $241,803.89 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15.
I make a motion to approve the purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and CDWG Chicago, Illinois, for six Microsoft SQL server licenses for a total cost of $19,586.58 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
Make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and Phillips Workplace Interiors, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for office equipment for a total cost of $10,234.17.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 17.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Whitmore Auto Group, Mountjoy, Pennsylvania, for three 2020 Ford Escapes, all-wheel-drive, for use by York County Children, Youth and Families Department, for a total cost $73,500 under a PA CoStarz contract.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 18.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Facilities Management Department and McClellan Company, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to replace two diverting valves and actuators and two isolation valves and actuators for the building cooling tower at the Judicial Center at a cost of $43,827 under a PA CoStarz contract.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know Scott's not here, and I had called him. He just said that these are apparently not working properly and need to be renovated or fixed.
The cost will be covered under the Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to approve a change in the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council bylaws to include changes in meeting frequency to increase in the number of board members, provide for a conflict of interest policy, modify the term of the board members, modify the process for bylaws amendment, along with other non-material updates.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
Motion to authorize the approval and execution of contract agreements for the following qualified contractors to provide weatherization services for the York County weatherization programs for a five-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2025, with a 2% pricing increase effective annually July 1st of each consecutive year, as listed below.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21.
Motion to approve and authorize an extension to the original contract agreement between the County of York, Langston Housing and Opportunity Partnerships, York Housing Opportunity Center, to provide down payment and closing cost assistance for qualified first-time homebuyers for the York County Homebuyer Assistance Program for an additional six-month period beginning July 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2020.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 22.
Motion authorizing the County of York to proceed with the preparation of financial and legal documents and an S&amp;P credit rating for the issuance of General Obligation Bonds Series of 2020 to advance refund the County's General Obligation Bonds Series of 2013 for debt services savings, refund its $60.56 million floating-rate note, and terminate the related swaps and fund capital projects, including the purchase of property at 2401 Pleasant Valley Road.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Maybe, Mark, just to clarify for the public that we are not signing or approving anything. This is just to move forward and investigate, so.
Right, right. We actually began this process back in February before COVID hit and the municipal bond market disappeared. Because interest rates were so low and because of the need to refinance our floating-rate notes this year that were related to swaps that were issued and that type of thing, we began taking a look at it to see if we could refinance several bond issues in addition to the floating-rate notes and get rid of the swaps altogether. And at that time, it was positive for the county. We were going to save several million dollars, get out of the swaps, get out of our variable-rate notes, really do a comprehensive change in the county's debt. And then the market, the municipal bond market disappeared. Right now, we are back to where we were back in February, January, February, and we got it back on the table, so this would do a number of things. It would provide about $15.5 million for the ultimate purchase and renovation of the Pleasant Valley Road property that we purchased last year. It would advance refund the 2013 general obligation bonds. It would refund the floating-rate notes and basically get us out of the swaps that we've been monitoring for the last 20 years for a way to get out of them. And what it would do would be give us all fixed-rate debt, which would be a positive view by S&amp;P and the rating agencies, getting out of the variable-rate debt, getting rid of the swaps, and it would level out our debt service about $19.5 million for the next 13 years. So it really sets the county up for the next 10 to 20 years, leveling out our debt and making it much better to budget for.
I'll just say, I mean, this is kind of my area. My prior, like, before we became County Commissioner, I worked in the public finance field, and interest rates are, right now, at an all-time low. We have a lot of variable-rate debt, like $60 million, which means that it varies with interest rates, and it can move up or down. So for future planning and security for the county, you know, this is a good thing. The swaps were put in before this board was onboard, and they are derivative, and you're paying an amount of money with a percentage in things, which I think it's a good idea to get out of it. Sometimes it's costly, but I think it's productive, and I think this is a good opportunity to take a look at our financial plan, all our outstanding debt, and make a good decision, and I think this is a good opportunity to do this.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 23.
Motion to award a contract to Ankowitz Enterprises, Incorporated, Tamaka, Pennsylvania, for the construction of the county complex development, public improvements contract. These improvements are associated with the transfer of the Pleasant Acres Nursing and Rehabilitation Center and the subdivision plan approved by Springsberry Township at their lowest bid price of $1,365,775.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And, Mark, I think for the public, we should talk about this.
And, Mark, I think for the public, we should talk about this. I mean, this was put in place when we sold the nursing home. There were some contingencies that we had to make sure of and provide for. So can you explain where the money's coming from and what we're actually doing here?
Right. One of the conditions of the sale of the nursing home in 2018 was the subdivision of the nursing home and the annex from the county property. The existing county property runs, it's one parcel that runs from the nursing home, I'm sorry, from the prison, the whole way through the 911 Center, the Substance Abuse Center.
Youth Development Center.
Nursing Home, the Youth Development Center, and the county annex, as well as archives. So this subdivision plan, which was approved by Springsberry Township, will subdivide off the nursing home and the annex from that parcel and make it its own separate taxable parcel. At the time that the nursing home was sold, what we did was we actually put $1.5 million into a Capital Reserve Fund to pay for the ultimate subdivision costs of Pleasant Acres. It was money that was taken from the proceeds of the sale and put into the Capital Reserve. We've got about $1.3 million sitting there yet. So this figures, you know, comes right into where we anticipated we would be in terms of total cost for the subdivision.
And, Mark, would this take into account, I know there was discussion on extending Davie's Road, those costs associated with that being as part of this?
No, unfortunately, those would be above and beyond that. But it looks like that project is going to go through. Springsberry's been working very hard on getting that approved by the PUC and the railroad, and now it looks like that's going to go through. One thing that, it will be an additional cost for the county to participate in that project with Springsberry Township. But the flip side of that coin is the bridge that currently carries the road to Pleasant Acres Nursing Home across the railroad needs to be replaced in the very near future. And if we can get Davie's Drive done, that bridge won't need to be replaced. It can be removed. So it will be a significant savings to the county.
Great.
Yep.
And you stated...
It'll take one more bridge off our bridge in the future.
And you stated it well here, but this was not a surprise cost. We knew about this when the nursing home was sold. We knew this was going to come. We escorted the money and just so the public understands that.
Yep. And going back to the original comments about the sale of the nursing home, you know, everyone looked at it as a $30 million windfall to the county. It was not a $30 million windfall.
Not everyone looked at it that way. I didn't.
We saved the annual loss. We got away from the annual loss that we were experiencing at the nursing home of $10 to $12 million a year. But the $30 million went to pay the associated costs, the historical costs that were associated with all of the employees at the nursing home, the unfunded other post-employment benefits, the pension costs, the subdivision costs and those type of things. So really, the county, the county netted out of it very little, about a million dollars until it was all said and done, until all those...
Like you said, the government took the responsibility of funding costs coming in the future to make sure that they weren't a liability and we did the right thing when we...
Right. And I can't imagine being in the nursing home business at this time, COVID-19.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 24.
Motion to approve the following substantial amendment to the 2019 York County Annual Action Plan in response to the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has allocated $1,312,833 in community and development block grant coronavirus funds and $640,548 in emergency solutions grant coronavirus funds to York County. These special allocations will be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic in the community as listed below.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. And I know our friends are here from the Planning Commission, so we'll ask them to come up for a minute and educate the community on these programs.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act has authorized additional housing and development funds to communities to respond to the growing effects of the pandemic. This is a separate allocation under the CARES Act from what the county received directly in the $40 million, $40.5 million allocation. Through the CARES Act, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has authorized and allocated to York County a little over $1.3 million in community development block grant funds for the coronavirus relief and about $640,000 in emergency solutions grant program funds. These special allocations will benefit the county for the next two years. For the community development block grant funding that comes down, we're going to be funding additional housing, public services, and public infrastructure activities that benefit low-to-moderate-income individuals and families. The emergency solutions grant funding will be earmarked for our homeless and near-homeless populations, and they will fund additional emergency shelter operations, homeless prevention, and rapid rehousing rental assistance programs activities. So with the approval of this amendment, that'll include all of the CARES Act funding I just mentioned, as well as those activities. After the approval, we anticipate seeing the money from HUD later this month.
So putting it in plain language, how would you tell the general public that this money will affect your county and benefit the residents of your county? Do housing opportunities or...
Housing, with the specific activities that are listed, a lot of the money's going to public services that benefit our low-to-moderate-income clientele through rental assistance programs, housing counseling. There's two specific infrastructure activities that are noted in the list. The emergency solutions grant funding, it's a big need right now with our rental assistance program, both in homeless prevention and the rapid rehousing of these individuals that might experience homelessness for the first time because of the effects of COVID, because there's obviously an economic situation going on in response to. So all these activities, and with the applications that were set forth, there was an extensive process to identify the needs within the community to receive those applications that municipalities, public service agencies felt were the growing needs right now in the current environment. So that set forth the activities that will benefit those groups that I outlined. And through that, that's what really formulated the list you have before you.
And maybe you could just share with the public. I know you and your colleagues on the Planning Commission spent a lot of time working with the community and vetting programs and learning what the needs are out there. Maybe just real briefly educate folks on the process you all went through.
Joanne, would you like to come on up with the process? Joanne oversees that process with the needs. I heard the Community Development Department. And I'll hand it over to her just quickly.
Thank you, George, I think. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the county to follow a fairly extensive public process as reviewing the needs of the community and considering what kinds of projects to fund. And then on the back end, having a public notice in the paper and a public participation process that involves a Assistance Advisory Committee. But at the beginning, the Planning Commission and other agencies worked together to put out a sort of a pre-application survey for all of the agencies that are involved in the Coalition on Homelessness and other funding, other agencies that are funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. So that survey came back and told us that one of the biggest needs that these agencies saw coming was the need for rental assistance because people were getting laid off and furloughed. So that became a big focus of both the Community Development Block Grant Program and the ESG program. We prepared application forms and guidance and posted those on the Planning Commission website. And they were also sent out to the members of the Coalition on Homelessness and other nonprofit organizations, as well as all municipalities. And that applied for Community Development Block Grant Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. When the applications came back, they were reviewed by Planning Commission staff interdepartmentally. And the Coalition on Homelessness has a review and ranking committee that reviews all kinds of funding applications that come through the Coalition on Homelessness. So those, both of those agencies worked together to review applications and determine funding amounts. And then that was put together in the plan that you see before you. We had enough funding in CDBG to cover the requests. We were a little short under the Emergency Solutions Grant CV funding and had to make a couple of budget adjustments. But in the end, we were able to fund a broad variety of programs and serve the community as they work through this crisis.
Did you say, and did I understand correctly, that some of the CDBG funding now, they relaxed the rules, and some of that can be used for helping to pay rents for people that have problems, economic problems, or not?
That's correct. Normally, under Community Development Block Grant Funding, we are not permitted to provide direct assistance to individuals. We can assist nonprofit agencies as they do that. But the Community Development Block Grant Program does not normally provide rent assistance. But because the country is in an emergency situation, HUD bent those rules a little bit and said, we are able to use Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide emergency rental assistance as long as it's going through an agency. So it doesn't go to an individual directly. It goes through an agency. The agency works with the landlords. And it's for people that are at risk of losing their housing. Maybe they have a notice to quit, which is really important because so many people have lost income. Landlords are losing income. We have an eviction moratorium that's running out in not too many days. So this will help keep people in their homes and help keep landlords whole. That emergency rental assistance program is very limited to three months. So it's a short-term kind of program, but hopefully we'll get people able to stay where they are.
A lot of time and effort and due diligence by the folks at the Planning Commission.
And a lot of cooperation with the Department of Human Services was very much involved. And all the participants in the Coalition on Homelessness, which is a very broad group, they worked very hard.
And just to circle back and emphasize a point that George made in the beginning, that this money is outside of the $40.5 million that the county received from the state for CARES funding. So this is additional funding.
So then somebody listening to this who is having problems with keeping their home or keeping their apartment and keeping it paid for, they would contact a nonprofit organization to get in line to get these fundings, or who would they contact?
We're recommending they contact 211.
211.
They've been working very closely with us, too. They're familiar with the programs, and they can help direct. There are other funding sources coming in to different agencies, and 211 can assist people in connecting with the agency that's most likely to help them.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Planning Commission. Item number 25.
Motion to approve a proposal between the County of York and PFM Swap Advisors LLC, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $24,000 to serve as the swap advisor in relation to the county's plan to terminate the outstanding basis swap transactions with the Royal Bank of Canada that were entered into on December 1, 2008.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second.
And, Mark, is this contingent on whether we move forward with...
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 26.
Motion to approve the appointment of Karen Mansburger as a new member to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council for three-year term from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2023.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 27.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-20 on behalf of the Community Development Department of the York County Planning Commission to approve the following changes to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, D.C., funded community development block grant program funding activities as approved in the York County 2019 Annual Action Plan as amended, listed below.
Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 28.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of June 24, 2020 totaling $4,476,428.83.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 29.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of July 1, 2020 totaling $4,260,397.22.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 30 regarding executive sessions. There was an executive session between our last commissioners' meeting to discuss litigation matters, including the status of settlement negotiations and case management progress in several cases. Moving on to other business, I know we're joined by Suli Pinos from the York County Economic Alliance, who is just going to share a few words on small business loan funding that's available directly from the state with a very tight window to apply.
Good morning. And an even tighter window to tune into one of our webinars, so I will start off with that. Thank you for allowing us to share a couple of updates. As you mentioned, the state yesterday opened up the application portal and application window for their small business relief fund, which will award grants in the amounts of $5,000 to $50,000, depending on the revenue that the business provides. It is a very straightforward process. Businesses in order to qualify need to have under $1 million in annual revenue, need to have 25 or fewer employees, and must be in compliance with state and federal taxes or be on a payment plan. The website for everyone interested in looking over the requirements, but also if they want to submit an application, is pa-businessgrants.com. Again, it's pa-businessgrants.com. All of this information is also on our preparedyork.com website, so please visit that in case you missed the link and the information. In a couple of minutes, not joking, in the next 10 minutes or so, our Vice President of Community and Economic Development, Silas Chamberlain, will be joined by Dan Betancourt from Community First Fund, which is one of the 17 statewide community development financing institutions that are authorized to access and process all of the applications. They will be hosting a webinar at 11 o'clock this morning on Zoom. The information is on our Facebook page, but also is shared on the stream of today's comments. It will be recorded if anyone misses it or would like to get that information afterwards. But also, if anyone needs assistance, any small business owners that need some assistance in Spanish, please reach out to the YCEA, and we'll be able to support and connect with them. Again, this application window opened yesterday. It is open for 10 business days, including 4th of July holiday. So all in all, the application window will close on July 14. There will be two additional rounds of funding and applications that will be open. But again, we are waiting for the state to notify us of when those exact windows will open. It is not a first-come-first-serve program, but we would always encourage small business owners to apply once they feel confident and comfortable with submitting an application. But if any of the businesses inquiring can't make it to the webinar today or have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the team at the York County Economic Alliance.
I know you know there were some qualifications, but if a small business got some other kind of CARES Act funding, do they still qualify or not?
As far as we're aware of, that's not an eligibility. It doesn't make them eligible. But we can certainly check on that. That is the most time-sensitive one. A couple of other on the same side of things of small business funding. Just yesterday, our Downtown Inc. and Downtown York teams enthusiastic, it was an amazing day for small businesses in our downtown York, where Downtown Inc. and the York County Economic Alliance awarded 30 small business grants totaling over $100,000 of funding directly into our downtown York small businesses, where we received, this was all provided through funds that were raised during Give Local York. And then through the support of a generous and anonymous donor, we were able to increase the funding source and funding pot to over $100,000. And we received 39 applications. Of those 39, 35 were eligible. Of those 30 recipients, and 100% of the businesses that applied that were owned by persons of color were able to receive funding. And as a whole, of all the 30 recipients, I believe it was 60% of all the recipients are either women-owned or women-led. So really, a very exciting, very enthusiastic day for our downtown in a time where access to capital is one of the biggest things. And we're really happy to have the webinar today, just to follow up on that for other state funding programs. And last, but certainly not least, just wanting to highlight our Trail Towns program, which is, it's crazy to think we are in July, but is almost a month old. It launched on June 6 for Nashville Trails Day. And thank you to our commissioners for supporting this initiative and some for coming into the five communities, Seven Valleys Railroad. Railroad, Glen Rock, the City of York, and New Freedom. And thank you for joining us for some of the walking tours and assessments where we invite residents and local stakeholders to explore that portion of the trail and let our consultants know, you know, is there signage, is there a water fountain, really just taking some time to look at everything of the trail as you also get to enjoy that portion of the trail. So we've had three of the five, we've visited three of the five trail communities with these walk shops, and this evening will be our next one in Railroad at 6:30, right on that, and then visitors or anyone that's interested in attending can join us at the parking lot across from the Jackson Bed and Breakfast.
I did that on Saturday at New Freedom, and I really enjoyed the walk. I walked with the mayor and a couple of council people, and we looked at a lot of the facilities in New Freedom and talked about the history, and it was very encouraging. I'd, I'd suggest people join. It's a neat, neat tour.
Thank you. It's a really great time to get out and explore our parks and really see the great, the, the great assets that we have in our county. So, thank you all.
What, one other thing, and maybe you can comment on this, and maybe you don't have too much, but I know it's Downtown Inc. I saw in the paper, they're talking about closing one block of, I think it's George Street for restaurants for a certain period of time. Can maybe talk about that so the public knows what we're promoting in York?
Absolutely, and I would be happy to get you some of the particular information to share across the county pages, but that will be starting in coming weeks, where our George Street, the northern part of George Street, will be closed off. The restaurants, it'll be to support outdoor dining. Again, we'll be able to share some more information later this afternoon.
Good.
And back to the Trail Towns for the public, you know, one of the missions in this program is to help drive business in those smaller towns that are connected to the trail, because that's really important, because these are smaller towns in our community and they matter just as much as the downtown area does, so.
Absolutely. It's really great getting a chance to see the businesses that are there, but also what is that opportunity and how to leverage all of the resources that these communities have. So it's a really great time, and trail use is significantly up in the last three months. It is up 242%. So now more than ever, it's a really great time to look at our trails and the assets and how can we best support them in the communities where they're in.
I don't know if you'll know the answer, maybe this is a question for Silas, but how do you determine that it's up 240%?
I think that's just from rail trail access information, but again, I'd be happy to, you know, our, Silas shared that information with me, so I'd be happy to get you that information.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Suli? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
The one update I just wanted to share with folks, we sort of touched on, Mark touched on Pleasant Acres a little bit. Part of the sale of Pleasant Acres required us to find a location for our coroner's office, and we have now moved the coroner's office officially to another location out off of Concord Road. We repurposed an existing, part of an existing building that the county already owns, so we utilized an asset that we already had. I know Pam Gay, our coroner, and her staff are very excited about moving to new office space. They had to get out of the facility that they were in, so exciting, exciting news and time for our coroner's office. We'll move on to period of public comment. Okay.
Anything, Mark?
And if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, and happy July 4th to everyone, and have a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend. So we'll now move on to salary board.
I'll make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements or set forth in New York County Employee Handbook or your county policy manual for the following departments and the Royal Office, with no, no other additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, as stated in an internal salary board detail. Department 9 Assessment, Department 17 Information Services, Department 24 Human Resources, Department 28 MHIDD, and Department 70 Emergency 911, and the Royal Officer Department 52, the coroner.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, and that ends our meeting for today. Again, everybody have a safe, happy, enjoyable July 4th weekend. Thank you.